And with that, you may be seated. And we'll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
And Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
And Ms. Krueger, at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. And with that, we do have a form of orders. Everybody's here, so we need to approve the agenda as provided to you.
I do have some changes.
Okay.
We need to remove item number seven and number eight, the two panel hearings.
Right.
We will re-advertise and have those in January.
Okay. With the agenda being amended, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second. All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item number five, approved and managed from November the third and November the tenth. Was everybody here at both meetings?
I was not here on the tenth.
On the tenth, okay. So we need a motion to approve the management from November the third.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Turner made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Jeter, second. All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. To approve the management from November the tenth, do we have a motion to approve those meetings? If you've had a chance to look at those, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bricky made a motion.
I'll second.
And Ms. Hood, second. All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And I'll say.
You'll say, and Ms. Krueger will say. Next item, Assistant Press Period, and I'll read this short statement, and we'll go into that. The Assistant Press Period upon the meeting, when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please turn to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up in the storm?
And Mr. Hall has signed up.
Okay, all right. And we have no particular order other than that. We just ask that you take turn to speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close Assistant Press Period. With that, Ms. Thompson, you want to go forward, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the people that don't know me, my name is Thomas Hall. I've been a lifelong resident of Scott County for fifty-three years. I've been a taxpayer of Scott County for thirty-four years. I was employee of Scott County for three years. I was let go because of an injury that I received from Scott, or working for Scott County on public, on county property, county time, county vehicle. Basically, I was discriminated against the way this was handled. We had two other employees that worked for the county that has got hurt and tore their rotator caps like I tore mine. They were fixed, stayed with their job until they retired. Me, I was given nothing but trouble the whole time that I was injured, and still injured, and still not fixed. I was, uh, the insurance company we had is named Vacor, which you guys probably done not. Mrs. Starnes, I've talked to her several times about it. She kept saying all I could get out of them was, "We having trouble with Vacor. We're having trouble with Vacor." We still got Vacor. If anybody here had an insurance company and they was having trouble with them, we wouldn't, you wouldn't have them, why? You would find another. But, uh, this accident happened, the first accident happened to me on August thirtieth of nineteen. I had asked, six months prior to this injury, for a safety harness before you could be tied off when you was on top of that truck getting on and off in case you was to fall. I was told that the county does not have to apply by OSHA rules. So, a safety harness wasn't provided. Six months to seven months to the day, I failed. I grabbed onto the truck with my left arm to keep from hitting the ground, which is thirteen foot, six inches to the ground. I tore my rotator cap. Basically, from day one, when I went to the doctor, I was put on restrictions to be doing no climbing, no lifting, no nothing. Like that, nothing over ten pounds. I was still left on the same job that I was doing, driving the truck, doing the same thing. Still having to climb, still having to do the job. This went on until eleven eighteen of nineteen. Upon that time, my doctor seemed that the county was not going to go by my restrictions, so she put me off from work. Mr. Gellwars and Mr. Dinges both was upset because the boys was off during deer season, and they had nobody to drive. They wanted me to go and call my doctor and see if she would let me drive on me, that they promised they would put somebody with me to do the other duties. I called the doctor. I have a statement here from the doctor saying that I will let you come back to work and drive on me. So, I come back to work. The first day, I was back on the nineteenth. They had somebody with me. From then forth, there was nobody rode with me. I had done the same job until Janu-, or July the seventeenth of twenty, when I ended up tiring the right rotator cap. On doing a job at the Duffield site. Still, they finally, I had trouble with Vacor, talking to Vacor, they put somebody with me for a month. It was one of the inmates. His name was Trent. Mr. Trent rode with me for one month. After that, Trent got out of the program. When he got out of the program, basically, I run the truck by myself, doing the same job that I was doing, even though I was even on more restriction, with two torn shoulders. Still doing the job. Left out again. Finally, in April of two thousand and twenty-one, the twelfth day of April, come in from a load that morning, they said, Mr. Collins was their boss at the landfill. He said, "Mr. Dinges wants to talk to you." Okay, then they finally recognized that I supposed to been on light duty procedures from then, from August the thirtieth of nineteen. Almost a year later, they finally recognized that I was on restrictions, so they put me on restrictions. I went by the restrictions they had me under. The lawyer that I hired was named Rob Hines Allen Johnson. Mr. Hines hung me up to dry. He literally wrecked my life after this. And basically, the way this come out and happened, I swear to my God that I believe that Ms. Starnes, Mr. Dinges, Mr. Hines, and Mr. John Honeycutt from the insurance company had this planned the whole time. On November the third, Mr. Hines had me to meet him at the county office, Derek Courthouse, at the county courthouse to sign some papers. In this paperwork, he knows that I can't read stuff up real close, so he had, he did tell me what was in the paperwork. I ended up, yes, I got a settlement for my shoulder that I did not want to begin. The boys at the landfill, anybody else knows that all I asked was to be fixed. You guys, I don't know all of you. I know Darrell worked at the Eastland, and the rest of you, I really don't know. But, Mr. Bricky, I know worked for the schoolhouse. He was my teacher my whole life. He's known me since I was a child, and he knows that I worked every day. And the thing of it is, I was left out, and basically, in my paperwork, yes, I got a settlement. I lost my social security because of this settlement. I cannot draw social security. I've worked for thirty-four and a half years. They, I called the social security office. We had a round and round with the social security office. Yes, I might have said a few words that I shouldn't have said, but any of you guys have worked for that length of time and be hurt and left out on your own, how would you feel? You think about it. The thing of it is, if this OSHA deal had been done like it should have been, I would have never been hurt. I was always told about working for this county, every time you would bring something up, "We don't go by OSHA rules. We're exempt. We're exempt." I called OSHA the other day after I was barred because I just wondered about that. I talked to Representative OSHA, "No, we're not exempt." All businesses, all counties, all cities has to go by OSHA. The other words is, when you're anywhere from four foot to six foot off the ground, climbing or whatever, you supposed to have a full body safety harness on capable of holding five thousand pounder greater. We also climb in the back of those trucks to clean the trucks there. We don't know what's in them trucks because you really don't know what the county people puts in them. They could be poison. They could be anything. You climb in there to clean the truck out, you supposed to have, uh, protective personal equipment, rubber boots, rubber suit, face shield, money dogs, stuff like that. Because if something goes out, goes in your face, cuts your eye, we don't have. We don't even have proper equipment to wash the vehicles. We have a hot seat up there. It's high pressure. You supposed to be wearing all PPE equipment when you're hotting and cleaning trucks. We don't have. The injuries that happened to me could have been perceived, but none, I was not. And I have the evidence here to show you all my restrictions and everything that I told you. I also have a recording of me and Mr. Dinges talking about it, and I know, being here, that you guys have other things to do. But after this meeting, I would like to meet with the supervisors in Friday, and I will let you see the evidence, everything else. And, and the thing of it is, I'm done gone from the county. I've, I've, I've been, I was punished because I got hurt. But, the leadership of this county, as far as being the main boss of this county, the best I can understand is you guys. You drop it down to Ms. Starnes, it goes to Mr. Dinges. I was held accountable for mine. They need to be held accountable for theirs. Mr. Dinges know better, but he did not do better. I'm a county taxpayer, and basically, my tax money, I don't want to pay for incumbents. And I would like to seek this board to, to look at what I've done, investigate, and basically, I guess the best word I can say is put the skids under Mr. Dinges. And let him be held accountable for his actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? And with that, we will come out to this expression period, and we'll go to the next item. And so, in our statement, we can respond or not respond to anything that you may say, so that's where we let this go unless someone has any comments about anything. Next item is, it's item number nine, seven, eight will be, is not, be on the agenda for next month. So, the next item is go Virginia Trail Resolution. What that's about, if you, it's on your tablet if you look at it, and it's just a letter of support from the board of supervisors. And so, just basically what it said there for, let it be resolved by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. The chairman is direct on behalf of the Scott County Board of Supervisors supports the application for twenty-five thousand dollars and get outside funding by the Daniel Boone Wellness Trail Association. So all that's saying, we're getting behind this letter of support. Anything of Ms. Starnes on that?
That's all I have.
That's all I have, too. And so, they wanted to, before this meeting, but anyway, we, we're getting it done here today. It's a good thing. It might cost anything, so we, we need to support this. So if we have a motion to support this resolution, I'll put it out there for a motion.
I'll make that motion and, and say that Mr. Bruce Robinette is very involved in this, and it's not going to cost Scott County anything.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Ms. Krueger, second. Any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item ten, the animal friendly tag. Ms. Starnes, if you want to take that.
Uh, this is something that we do every year. Residents in Virginia have an option to give the animal, animal friendly license plate, and we do get a portion of that back. And this year, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars, and in the past, we have done a motion to approve to give that to the Scott County Humane Society.
Do you have a motion to give this one thirty-five to the Scott, to the Humane Society? Do you have a motion to do that? You like animals, don't you?
I love.
I know you do.
And I'll second it.
You gonna second it?
I love animals, too.
I do, too, so I'm gonna, anyway. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item eleven. I think everyone's pretty familiar with this. Uh, Ms., uh, let me look here a second. Bring this up. Ms. Hood got some emails, and I did, too, and it's her district. I referred it to her to, to run with this, and she did very well with it. But anyway, this resolution is to, uh, to name this bridge in honor of old Gene Dishner. He was one of the, he was the first, the first county administrator, was he not, Peter? And, uh, and I worked for him myself back along, you know, some time ago when he was the director of DME, and so, but he's been around a while, and I think it's well deserved. And so, if you want to say anything about this, you may.
I never knew, uh, Mr. Dishner, but having read about him, um, I'm very impressed. He was a very impressive person.
You won't, you won't. So anyway, doing this, I think it'd be, it would be a good thing to do. I think that's why I want to speak on this, so if you want to, Mr. Abbott. Yes, sir. I've known this guy a few days in my lifetime, too, so we work together a little bit, so.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me take a little bit of your time on behalf of, of Mr. Dishner, and, uh,
Mike, let's take your lines, everybody.
Oh, okay. My name is Mike Abbott. Um, I'm a former public relations manager for the Virginia Department of Mining, Smuggles, and Energy. Now, happily retired. But I work, like Danny, I worked with Mr. Dishner for, well, since nineteen, well, eighty-five. But I first met Gene in nineteen seventy-four, as he, when he was the chair, I guess, the county administrator. And I had just moved here from Northern Virginia and was, had volunteered to help with a survey on arts and education. And Gene was one of the people that I interviewed, so it's the first time I met him. Ten years down the road, I'm working for him, where he's our director. And I just want to say that Gene was, uh, a creative, innovative man. He, he took the Department of Mining, Smuggles, and Energy, uh, well, just raised the bar on how the department performed, how it served its customers. That's meaning mining industries as well as the citizens. And, um, he had one of the driest senses of humor that I've ever encountered, which I thoroughly enjoyed. He was a mentor to me, and I know to a lot of the other people that worked for him. And I think recognizing this son of Scott County is a, is a great thing to do.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anyway, this resolution, I think, is pretty important, and, and Sally, she took the ball around with this, and, uh, anyway, it's in her district, and I think it's an honor to do this, recognize someone that's contributed, uh, the way he did. This last part of the resolution, I'll read that into the record. So now, now therefore be it resolved that, that Scott County, in accordance with the requirements of section three, three point two dash two one three of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the Commonwealth Transportation Board, an instruction number six oh six nine located on route six fifty, in tax road of Scott County, as the old Gene Dishner Memorial Bridge. I think it's very appropriate we do that, and so, if no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Hood has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Turner, second. Any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so it will be done. The cost of that was how much?
It varies. Uh, it can be anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars. Uh, we will send this to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for their approval, and once that is done, we can set a date, and Mr. Robinette has a date recommended. And if that works out with VDOT, we'll have it, I believe it's in April twenty twenty-two, we'll have that dedication on site.
Do we need to vote now where the funds come from to pay for that? Do we wait till?
We can wait till we have a absolute, I believe the last one we done was around three hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, ain't no about paying for it, so we'll do that whenever the time comes.
We've got some time to take care of that, and we'll have a, an estimate from VDOT at the time and have them examine.
All right, good. It'd be very appropriate, and I think this is, be well served, and it's a good thing to do that. Thank you, Ms. Hood, for taking that ball and going with it, and so, it's a, it's a good thing here for the county to recognize someone that contributed the way that Gene Dishner did.
Oh, I'd like to thank Mr. Abbott for coming. He was my mentor when I became president of, um, APCA, and I really appreciate you, Mr. Abbott.
Feel the same way about you, gentlemen, and thanks for helping get this forward. Appreciate it.
All right, with that being done, uh, it's, it's a good thing to do that. All right. Next item is Equalization Board, and boy, we've had this around and around, getting people served, and we have a list. It's on your tablet. If you have a chance to look at it. And, uh, so anyway, uh, the names are Jack Sanders, Jack Compton, Jordan McDavid, Keith Wilson, Karen Artsaw, Wayne Staller, Kathy Turner, Jeff Kegley, and Angela Ketron is an alternate. So we do have enough names there to, to, to recommend them to be appointed by a judge, uh, to put these in place. Is there any discussion before we entertain a motion? See these people out fighting for serving. We had a little trouble getting people to do that, so thank them for willing, be willing to do this, and they're gonna, they're gonna have a lot to do. I mean, they will, but I think they'll do it well. I, I know several of these people, and I think they will serve well. So on that, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, to approve these to be submitted to the courts for, uh, to put in place. Do we have a motion to do that?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so those names will be submitted to the court, uh, for that. All right. Next item is the, uh, I asked if this be put on the agenda. I put the, this is about the Plens River Try Service, and, uh, Ms. Kegley, I answered her forward email that she had sent out some time ago, and I looked at it, and I agree with her, probably nothing we can do the way the ordinance was put in place. Was it two thousand, what year was it, Sally? Don't mean to blindside you, but it's, it was back over ten years ago.
The ordinance is in nineteen eighty-one and two thousand and nine when the transfer station was built.
Anyway, that is pretty well set in stone, I think, and, uh, so I don't know if we want to discuss it. We can, if not, we'll move on. Anybody have any discussion on it? We'll just move on. I don't think there's nothing we can do to make a difference in this. Anyone? And like I said, I had talked to him, and, uh, he was pretty expensive what he was doing, and I was for doing something, but, uh, you know, we probably won't be able to. All right, next item, fourteen, the Monks and Gap Waste Site, uh, stuff. We, uh, I know we don't have anything down there for people to trash in, uh, no place to put it. Any discussion on that? It is on the agenda to discuss here today.
I was just wondering, Bill, if, if you got a chance to talk with VDOT or Weber City about the field we talked about with Mr. Ferguson, last meeting?
If I'm correct, Ms. Starnes made contact with VDOT, and they're looking at the soccer field. Is there any, Ms. Starnes?
Yeah, we'll have to see if that would be approved by them, and they were also, um, working on a turn lane at the other property that we discussed last meeting. Uh, Mr. Necessary has retired, so I will have to speak with his replacement about that because he was working on that before he left.
Okay.
Donnie retired?
I didn't know that.
Earlier this month.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Donnie was a big contributor. He really did the work with.
Anything else on this, and we'll have it down the road somewhere whenever we, uh, see what's going on with it.
Which location is your preferred location?
I think the way, uh, Bill described it the last time we talked to everybody at the chair, the soccer field, it, it, if the school system is going to the new athletic complex over here, which Mr. Ferguson says they was trying to transition to, that would be, uh, the soccer field would be a way to put the new system in that, that Bill was talking about, along with Weber City. Weber City's going to do away with their private trash pickup and go through another method.
Well, since we had our last meeting, we don't think that that's going to happen. We're just, we, we don't know for sure.
Okay. Well, I still think that would be the best. It would, it would cut out a lot of the, it'd cut out the road that's going to have to be built, or the turn lane over at the other side, and all that grading, and being able to see that as you come through Wildlow Gap. We're gonna have to cover that thing some way so it doesn't look as bad as the other one did over the years. So I'd prefer the field if it could work out.
You gotta give me something to, to go on if I know which direction you're leaning, which probably.
Well, that's my fault.
Yeah, I think so, too, looking at the, on the, looked at on the Google Earth, that day, the map and stuff, and so, we'll look at that in the, so when time permits, or we get our heads together on that, and so we can look with it. Anything else on that? Let me back up just a second. I know Mr. Hall's still here. Uh, you mentioned about us meeting with you. I don't think we legally can do that. Any meeting we have is open. There's a reason we can't go in a closed session, and, uh, so I don't want to leave you hanging here thinking we can do that legally. I don't think we can do that without it being an open session.
The thing about this, how am I gonna show you the information?
Uh, did you human resources think? We have two employees, that's Ms. Starnes and the county attorney, and as far as us getting involved in that, I don't think it'd be appropriate for us to do that. And I hate to, you know, I'm not trying to, to play dodgeball or anything. It's just, you know, we cannot close meeting with you. Any meeting we have is an open meeting, unless we go in a closed session, or it's reasons we can't, and that's not one of them.
Well, it just seems like it's very unfair for somebody that cannot prove what happened. Yes, you have got people that, that looks over this, but when they look over and they're the people that's involved in it, uh, that right there is, it looks like to me a conflict of interest there.
Well, that's, that's my opinion. Ms. Kegley, am I correct in saying that we cannot, uh,
You can't as a group, no.
You cannot, so, and I don't mean, like I said, to try to dodge out or avoid, it's just legally, we cannot, uh, go in a closed session. It has to be open session, and so I don't, and I don't think we can do that. It wouldn't be appropriate for us to do that.
Well, I, I would, one thing about it, I want the people of Scott County to know, I did not give my job up willingly, and I want the people to know.
Well, I think you stated that, and we thank you for coming, and.
I've done my job every day like I'm supposed to do.
And we appreciate that.
And I was let down by this county.
All right, we appreciate you. Our next item is bookkeeping, and Ms. Starnes is gonna do that, I think, so Ms. Starnes, if you would.
Please appropriate thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars to recordation taxes, revenue three dash one dash one two zero seven zero dash zero 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 one, and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars to expense code four dash one dash one two one one zero dash one one zero one. County administrator temporary salaries, and please transfer fifty-seven hundred dollars from, I'm sorry, that's all the appropriations.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on appropriation as described by Ms. Starnes?
I'll make a motion.
All righty. Mr. Turner made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, next group, we say. Uh, any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Okay, transfers. Please transfer fifty-seven hundred dollars from Electoral Board Contractual Services, Election Officials, one three one zero zero dash three two zero zero, to license fees, one three one zero zero dash six zero three five, and that's all the transfers.
Do you have a motion to make the transfers as described by Ms. Starnes?
Absolutely.
Gina made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Starn, uh, y'all, uh, Ms. Hood, second. Uh, all three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And we have one grant. Please accept Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Firewise Grant. If accepted, please establish the following expense codes, four dash one dash three five two one zero dash eleven hundred salaries, twenty-one hundred employers' FACA, six zero zero five supplies, and revenue code three dash one dash two four zero four zero dash zero zero seven three, DWR Firewise Grant. Reimbursement will be appropriated once received and deposited at the treasurer's office, and our grant amount will be three thousand dollars.
Okay. Do you have a motion to establish these codes and accept these, these grants? Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Turner made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All three votes sent aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. All righty, appointments, uh, can I please do that to Ms. Starnes?
I am. Let me send Mr. Bruce to the tapes, please.
All right. And we will.
Okay, for appointments, uh, we have Tourism Development Committee. Kelly Bagley was serving and did not reapply. You have one application, Matt Brot.
Do we have any nomination for the Tourism Development Committee?
I make a motion. We nominate Matt Brott.
Any other nominations?
I make a motion. Nomination ceased. Vote by affirmation.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
For the second opening on the Tourism Committee, Rex McCarty, who had been serving but did not reapply, and you have one application, and that is Kirsten Rock.
Okay. Give me one second. All righty.
You had one up that applied, right?
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any nomination for this position?
Yes. I'll nominate the person, right.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion.
Have most nominations ceased? Vote by affirmation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
For the Building Code Appeals Board, Jeff Kegley has been serving, and per Mr. Gilmer, he is willing to serve again. We just don't have his application yet, but he is willing to serve.
Jeff Kegley?
Jeff Kegley.
Okay. All right. Have any nomination for the Building Code Appeals Board?
I'll nominate Mr. Kegley.
All right. Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion. Nomination ceased. Vote by affirmation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bricky, second. All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And our last appointment is the Housing Authority, and Randall Compton resigned, and we have no applicants.
Okay. Do we have any nomination for the Housing Authority?
I'll nominate Jack Compton.
All right. Any other nomination? Jack Compton. Have any other nominations? Not any motion. Nomination ceased. Vote by affirmation.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Turner made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Ruby, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. I talked to Jack last night about that in the debate. Is it the fourth Monday, or the fourth Thursday they made that what you said there?
That's what the old miss that had. I don't think it changed anymore.
It's the fourth Thursday.
About 12:00.
About 12:00.
Oh, they changed time.
In the evening? 12:30 in the evening, okay. He asked me, and I didn't know. And then Darrell said it was probably the fourth Thursday. So, anyway, I'll let him know. Jack has served on some things that he's, he used to come aboard here, and he's served the county well, the town line, and he serves in the west, and he would do that. All righty. Next item is the county attorney items.
I don't have anything this month. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for our county attorney? I guess you're good for another month. Merry Christmas. All right. All right. Next item is item 18. Ms. Starms.
You have $10,180,782 in the general fund. That's a 400-plus thousand below this time last year, which was expected. As far as claims, early claims total 57,000, I'm sorry, early claims total $86,272.77. Current claims for the month total $933,934.76. And as you can see by your sheet, the big one was the quarterly payment to the regional jail that totaled $629,520.87. And another pretty good sized one was for Armstrong Construction for in progress on the fire training facility, $65,239.97. So, total claims that need approving is $1,032,37.90.
Danny and I went and looked at the earth, and it looks like it does a real good job.
It looks really good.
If you get a chance to, by look at it, it's really impressive. And so, it's gonna be a great asset for the county. And I'm sure firefighters will appreciate that, especially the amount of training they have to have. And it's gonna help them to get class, get their training classification required. So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really good thing for the county, for our departments to have that. The majority of that was bought with grant money. We had to put a little bit of skin in the game too, but that's okay. But it's, 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 like I said, the majority of it paid for through grants. So, it's really a good thing we have here in the county. Look over the claims. Any questions for Ms. Starms? And we'll ask for a rule here in a second. Well, the amount is down 400,000 from last year. You said that you expected that. Is there a reason we expected it?
Because we're taking so much from the general fund to balance the budget this year.
Okay. All right. Everybody understand that?
Oh, tax collection, no, do you know? Are they doing?
I looked this morning, and real estate's at 65%, and personal property's at 77%, but they still are processing the mail that was sent in and collected. So, I'm seeing sizable deposits each day still after the deadline where the mail has been received, and they're still working to process all of it.
So, we should get a pretty good picture of it in their January meeting. We should, well, better than how much are we staying?
I guess after that, the second notices will go out probably.
Hopefully. Hopefully. And they didn't go out last year. I mean, I'll just say it right here. They did not go out in February last year, and it should have. And it still bothers me that those did not have, that did not happen. If y'all don't know, we tried, we wanted to run the names in the newspaper, both not paying their taxes, and we couldn't because the second, the link notice did not go out. And so, the law says you have to wait 14 days. After the link notice go out, you can run the names in the paper. We could not do that because those second notices did not go out in the treasurer's office, which hindered us on tax collection big time. That's not being political here. I get accused of that sometimes, but it's a fact. So, for whatever reason, they did not go out. All right. Need a motion to approve the paid bills you have there before you. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ditchman, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Jack, Ms. Starms, next item.
I have a couple of things under miscellaneous. On your tablet, you have a flyer for the rabies clinic. That's this Saturday at the animal shelter. This is in a partnership with the Lincoln Memorial College of Veterinary Medicine, the Virginia Department of Health, and Scott County. The clinic is $5. Our dogs must be on a leash and cats in a carrier, and the hours are 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, everyone, please take advantage of the rabies clinic if you have pets that are in need of that vaccine. And I do have a couple of other things. I talked to Midsy earlier this week, and we met with her about sending the delinquent taxes earlier. And in January, she plans to advertise for the yearly DMV stop notice, which she does each year. And she would also like to include just advance notice to the taxpayers that the 2019, 2020 delinquent taxes will be turned over to collections the first of February. So, she wanted me to bring that to the board's attention for your approval, to make sure that you know that that would be in the paper as a joint publication with the DMV stop notice.
She talked me about that down at Food City the other day, and I commend her for doing that. I mean, that's quicker than usual, but I do, I commend her for doing that. And do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so, just as long as you're in agreement.
Everybody okay with that, I think. I'm glad she's doing that. So, anyway, the thing about the DMV notice, now, people get their license plates for like three years, and so, they, you can't hold them up on getting their tags if they're not paying their personal property taxes. And so, anyway, it's kind of a hindrance there by collecting because you get your tags for that long. So, before, it's the yearly thing, or even bi-yearly, that you, you couldn't get your tags until you paid that. So, but now, that's, that's not the treasurer's issue. It's just the state is doing that, so.
And I do have one other thing.
Okay.
Dougville Fire Rescue has been awarded a FEMA grant in the amount of $573,333.33 to purchase new air packs for all the county fire departments. And this does exclude Doug Allen because at the time, they opted out of the grant. As a condition of the grant, they are required to contribute non-federal funds equal to 5%, which totals $28,666.67. Since the grant does specify non-federal funds, I don't believe that we can use our ARPA funding for that match. So, they are asking, as a group, if the county would help them with the match. They did pay the grant fee from money that they did receive from the county, and that was above $14,000 for the grant writer. So, they do have some skin in the game. And this is a big grant opportunity for the fire departments because I think most of them do have outdated air packs, and it's a good way to get their equipment upgraded. But they just wanted me to bring, Roger couldn't get off work today where he works. They're having a COVID spread, so he's got several out and wasn't able to be here.
Okay. And if we approve this, it would come from our contingency fund. Is that correct?
You could take it from there. You have a little over $43,000 remaining halfway through the year. If you get to a point where you need more money, we have some recordation tax money that we would be able to appropriate and transfer into your contingency if there's other items that came out, that came up before Jink there that you need money for.
And like I said, our volunteer fire departments are so important to this county, and we do everything we can to try to make them successful and go along with Life saving crew to day deal. So, we, we appreciate them. They got their bingo started back?
Started back about three weeks ago.
Okay. And I seen where it was going to, but I don't know if it had or not. So, it's a good, it's a fundraiser they have to, for the life saving crew in Scott County. So, that's good. This amount was, say the amount again, at least it needs to be 28,000 or what? That's why I had to look down on insurance. I was right.
And they probably won't need that till March or April. So, we'll have a better idea where we're looking on contingency at that time as well.
All right. All righty. Do we have a motion to do this? And do we come out with a contingency fund? Do we have a motion to do this?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second and say thank you, Frida, for figuring out the finances for us.
Okay. Yep. Mike and I were talking about that, how you all, you did great with this, and getting the funds, where it comes from and all of that. So, I don't call you a bean count, but you do pretty good. You really do. So, I commend you for that. All right. Mr., Ms. Hood made a motion. Ms. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the Senate, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Anything else, Ms. Starms?
That's all I have.
All righty. Moving right along. We're ready now for the presentation by Mr. Ditchman. I think I seen him come in, so.
Right on time.
Right on time. And we will have closed session whenever he stood his presentation. We'll be going in closed session. A couple items. We'll get into that then. But so you know that the folks here know that we'll be going in closed session when Mr. Ditchman, Mr. Ditchman. How you doing?
I'm doing pretty well, so.
All right, good.
How are you all?
Good, wonderful.
Good to see you. And did you get the written report in the packet? Okay. I didn't bring copies.
It's just on the tablet.
Okay. Report of, okay. Report of the projects this time. But it's good to see everybody, and Merry Christmas. Water here. Let me start out by saying something that's not here, and something that's occasionally brought to my attention, and we've tried to address. And that is the, it seems to be misinformation or misconception that the PSA uses tax dollars. And, and so, maybe we can get it in the paper, that we do not use tax dollars.
Yeah. And that'd be pointed out. A lot of people do think that.
And this came up yesterday. One of our board members was here for the reassessment appeal, and somebody approached him and said that y'all were raising taxes to pay for water and sewer projects. And so, let me just make it as clear as I can that, and y'all, not, this is not for board supervisors, but that we do not use tax dollars. There is no tax increase. No taxes go into our water and sewer projects. We get funding from various sources. Well, let me say, tax dollars do go into our projects, but it's, it's from federal and state agencies.
Right.
So, it's, it's all tax dollars, but it's not county tax dollars. It's not property taxes. Not Scott County tax dollars that goes into the PSA or for the PSA water and sewer projects. We are an enterprise fund of the county, which means we're supposed to be run like a business. And we do that, and we pay our expenses, including project expenses, based on revenue from water and sewer bills. Okay. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Or any clarification?
Okay.
Then I'll move on into what I gave, the report I gave you about our projects. And product, let me just say, overall, progress on construction has been slow. Not only contractor projects, but projects that are, we are constructing in-house. Part of that is COVID, part of that is prices from getting pipe and, you know, supply chain stuff. But we're optimistic that this is gonna turn a corner. So, Daniel Boone has been under construction building that sewer project down in that community for a couple of years, and project, and the construction is still slow due to the rock. But they're making progress. A project that hasn't gotten off the ground real good, but we have started construction, have done construction parts of the project. It's a sustainability project. And we're waiting on approval from the health department for some of the plants there. Construction of the project that is water lines in three different areas is, is about two-thirds done. And that's the item, Dingus Hall of Gaswell Road. And then, of course, you know that the Black Gum Lane, Upper Cliff Mountain Phase One project is, is under construction. I believe they started that day after we built the gold shovels. And funded projects, but not yet under construction is Robinette Valley and Hunter's Valley West. This is one that's, I keep having to tell you a new date of when it's gonna start. And I'm here to tell you again, it has not started. We have ordered the pipe several months ago, and it's not in. And we are going to go back and rebid for contractor to do the labor part, since we've already ordered the pipe. We think that's gonna be the quickest way, but it depends on getting adequate funding. We've had a difficult time getting adequate funding from the Virginia Department of Health.
Michael, that Hunter Valley West, will that, will that include the whole, the whole road, the whole area?
Not the whole road. That will go, that was, we had a project several years ago that started on the west end and moved toward Fort Blackmore. This one's gonna start at Big Stony Creek and go to the west. But there's a gap in there where there's hardly any dwellings, and so, there'll be a gap.
One guy, I'll say, now, W.C. Bagley, he's, he's talked to me several times about getting where he lives, and I don't know if he's gonna go that far or not.
I don't, if he's in that cluster of homes on Hunter's Valley West on the Big Stony Creek.
He's down the lower end of it.
Yeah, he's in it.
I thought he wa, I told him I thought he was, but
He would be in.
He calls me occasionally, and so.
Tune to call us and we can check.
All right.
And Nicholsville Water Improvements, we're waiting on a permit from the health department on that one. Nicholsville Wastewater Improvements, that's another one that bids came in high from contractors, and we rebid it, and we got a more reasonable bid, but it's still higher than our budget. So, we appealed to DEQ for more funding. So we appealed to DEQ for more funding and we're awaiting their response. Yuma and Hilton Sewer, different phases, is still in design. The main holdup there is getting easements for the sewer. And then somebody turns us down, we have to redesign that section. It's just dragging on too long, but it's slow progress, making progress. We've got a project to replace more old galvanized water line in wherever city. Got that funded and, but best is save until last here. Number six, Central Scott County Water. As I told our board last month, we received an astounding offer from USDA of grant, loan combination grant of over ten million dollars for that project. It's, I think it was seventy-some percent grant, just unbelievable. We were just elated and still on cloud nine about that. So the engineers are in design on that. And project's not yet funded. The multi-community project, actually that one is partially funded. A phase one is to serve Ingle Cooper and Fay and Olive and that's in design. And we're still optimistic about getting the rest of that project funded. And then we're getting user agreements right now for Reed Hollow Water and Sewer. So that's where we stand, so we've got a lot of projects going on. Just trying to get water out to folks that need public water and then provide sewer service where it's feasible.
I have a question about, and I'm really confused about this. Back in Part A, number three, Alley Valley Dingus Hollow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand that, I don't know where Gaswell Road is. And then the Reed Hollow that you're trying to get, that's not yet funded, says that will go to the top of the hill at Reed Hollow. Is that up to where you turn right to go out to golf course?
Yes, and it's going past where you turn right?
Yeah, to the end.
Yeah, I think the project starts about there.
Okay.
Goes up to the top.
Okay, and then you've got the one that goes from Clinch Mountain over to Clinch River, east of Gate City and north.
That's Central Scott Water Project. That's the one we got the huge grant.
That's along Route 72, the most part of it.
It's seventy, seventy-one on Snowflake, Big Moxon Road, and then on up to Nicholsville. That's Phase One, ties into the town of Nicholsville Water System. And then also there's another, other phases, you know, serve the rest of Mandeville, serve Midway.
Okay, and you're still not mentioning the road that I'm interested in, and that's 72.
That's in the Central Scott Water Project.
Okay, great, okay, that's what I wanted.
Now, it's an expensive project. That's in a second phase. So, you know, once we get construction going on the first phase, we'll seek funding for the rest of that project, the other phases. It's a huge project, expensive project. And the prices are elevated, everybody's heard that, prices are elevated. We hope that the prices will come down and that we'll get to use the funding we've gotten on Phase One to go ahead and start working on Phase Two with the money we've got. So hopefully prices will come down.
You saying that, I heard one project in Wise County, a four million dollar project, and the bid come in seven million, that's some of the craziest that's going on and.
Yeah, I think that was the Cobra Water Project.
And so that's how much it's going up beyond what the amount was approved for, you know, to do. And it comes in, the bids are coming in extremely high. But these companies, one guy, he had three crews, he's down to one crew, he can't find a light.
Yeah.
And so that's an issue that they've got, that, it's like everywhere. They're having trouble finding people to work and so, anyway, it's an issue.
That's all I planned to say, but I can, I'll be happy to answer questions or comment on anything else you would like to inquire about.
Any questions for Mr. Ditchman? Appreciate you.
Okay.
No questions, it's a good thing, you know it, don't you?
Well, especially if I don't know the answer.
All right, we do appreciate you coming and thank you. We'll see you in about three months, I guess.
Yeah, thank you and have a great Christmas.
You too, man. All right, that sort of ends the agenda, except for comments, we'll get into that. We'll be going to closed session, we'll take a break in a few minutes. So go in the comments, request recommendations, Mr. Ditch, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Good tip.
Good.
Mr. Ditch?
Everything's going good. I did get a call the other day about Loray Road, you know, that's one of the roads that I've been mentioning. And they do plan on replacing all of those drain tiles sometime or another. They said they've got a lot of people off on vacation right now, so it'll be, that'll be a pretty good sized project because it's like seven or eight drain tiles within two-hundred yards. But I did get that, I've not heard anything about Pond to Rose Road yet. But it does seem like they're trickling in now. I am getting some phone calls, so hopefully we'll get some of these roads fixed. I did get a call about on Corn Ridge, the guard rail, and I spoke with Jackie about it. There's a guy that bought where the American Legion owned, and I didn't even realize that they owned it, but they had plans at one time to build a building on Corn Ridge. And you can see where there's a road where they started to build a road. But anyway, they've moved the guard rail to where when he goes in there, he has to run over those bumps. And that's a pretty dangerous place. And I mentioned it to Jackie and hopefully they'll look at that. That guard rail's been damaged, so they're gonna have to be working on it anyway. That, if they could move that guard rail over to give him access to his property, a better access, a safer access, anyway. But appreciate what everybody's doing.
Thank you. Mr. Brick?
All I'd like to say is I'd like for everyone to remember Tom Hilton's family and friends in prayer. I've known Tom a lot of years. He was a big supporter of the schools in the county. And the best you could say when somebody's deceased is that they were a good man, Tom's a good man.
He was.
Thanks, sir. On that, I'd like to say is I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and hope you have a wonderful new year coming up. And so we've had a sort of like 2020, kind of a different year to deal with, but I think the staff all over have done well with what you've done with the funds from the coronavirus stuff, call it whatever you want, the John, the committee's done well with that and trying to see where things should go and how it should be, so. The one thing that, I'll talk a free later about it. The crossroads out here, they feed on Mondays, they feed a lot of people. Had a hundred and seventy Monday a week ago that's feeding and they're just wondering if any of that money from the coronavirus money, our funds we're going to call it, could they ever be a recipient of any of that, you know, just a little bit would help. They're feeding a lot of people out there on Mondays and so it's a part of the local churches doing that. So I don't know if it's an appropriate expenditure or not, but anyway, I'm gonna throw that out there.
Take a look at it.
Okay, if you would. And again, that's all I have. Ms. Hood?
The highlight of my month was the groundbreaking for Black Gum Water Project. And I'm so happy that work has begun. And I'd like to thank Ms. Starnes for her work on getting the bridge dedication resolution done. And I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Ms. Grooby?
Thank everybody for everything you've done, thanking all the staff. Hope everybody has a super awesome, very Merry Christmas and a wonderful new year.
With that, we'll take a break and we'll come back. We're going to closed session, we'll come back. Started a mix about missing a client, I was on Corn Ridge.
Oh, yeah. Well, they was. You know, I kept in, I worked nights, biggest part of the time when I was on the railroad. I saw. I saw...